I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you, Ms. Price. God thank you for the opportunity for your time for just the new school, the excitement of the new school for students and teachers and the community. God, again, just so grateful, more grateful about your service and things that you want us to do, how you want us to interact with people. God, I pray that we'll be sensitive to that and will never get ahead of you. If we ever do, God, pray that we'll slow down, feel the need in the spirit to be like the first she wants to go again for your purpose and your goodness. God, we love you. Thank you for the relationships that we have with people in the school. I pray this will be a year where all of those things are strengthened for our students, the faculty, and the community. And God will give you praise, honor, and glory in heaven, and all comes from Jesus and amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman.
Yeah. It's complicated. I know that I actually had me years doing a little turn around.
I had your next round.
He was working on it yesterday because of the same.
That's what he said. That's why I thought they said we're going to change.
I know that metal traffic, but normally metal traffic, there's no traffic. They had been three cars come through all day.
We'll call this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
And Ms. Wicker.
Present.
All board members present.
Come on, it's gone. Oh, there it is.
Do you want to have anything we'd like to talk about before a meeting starts?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know when to stick it up when I make comments, since I'm probably going to be very unpopular, we're all standing up, so it's a big block there. Hopefully nothing's wrong. I want to talk about item eight, tax rate. I heard on the radio, I think it was, because my wife played a replay of it, Mr. Ford made a comment that because property values have come, have been raised lately because inflation causes things, the value go more and cause them. He's proposing, if I understood him right, to lower the tax rate so that people aren't causing people to pay more than they were previously. Now, my bottom line is I'm against that. I don't want to pay any more taxes than I have to, but I would question, I would like the board to discuss when we get to number eight, what analysis was done as to what's the impact of giving up this extra income that could help us do some other programs? Because we're always looking for money.
If Ms. Wicker would allow for me now, I won't wait till number eight, and I think you will, this, your, all your concerns will be addressed.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Question one is the analysis, who does it benefit?
Yep.
Me, all of you, but does it benefit the school district? And I would say that.
No, we are poised remarkably well, and that's the only reason, and I appreciate that. If school districts have people like you, Mr. Unian, that said, stood up and said, hey, let's not lower our tax rates, that would be awesome, because that doesn't happen too often now. But, and, and I think you all know me well enough, I don't, I don't typically recommend this, but, Mr. Unian and board members, I'll briefly say this, and then I think it will, it will address your concerns. Because property valuations have went up so much, this still generates that 4% of additional revenue that would be as if we were approaching the board members and said, hey, we want that 4% revenue increase that we oftentimes have, well, we've talked about before. This is not the compensating rate. So, the compensating rate would be what you referenced in keeping the rate the same, that would, that would equal the same amount of revenue that was generated the previous year. That is not, that is not this point at all. Fifty-one point one lowers the tax rate, again, you're correct, our property valuations went up so much, but still generates that 4%, that magic number of revenue for the district. And anything above that, in full transparency, would have to be advertised special and subject to recall by the voters, because it is, because property valuations have went up so much.
I heard you say that, and I still don't agree. Because I, I sit here, and most of the time I just make something not because common that really isn't that important, nor does it mean a whole lot. But I also sit all the time and listen to the problems we have with whether we can fund, and I know there's different money for different.
Sure, sure.
Or we do the same thing in the military. Although I think we have more bugs than you two. But how do, how much do we pay substitute teachers? What raises can we give to our teachers to make sure they're, that they're going to stay here? Just listening to the TV today, I guess there's thousands, or 10,000 teachers over the last year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but who have quit teaching. So somehow you've got to have, not necessarily here, but we've got to have the money to hire those teachers. We've got to make sure they think that we're thinking of them. How about the IT department? Your comment about we can't afford to keep fixing chrome books, and I agree, we need to get people to pay for the books that they get. But are there the other things that we could do in the IT department to make teachers' job easier, to make your job easier to do things? So you've got that extra money, and I'll finish it up with this. Bill Clinton, and I'm a Republican, so we get that out of the way. His term finished, they were running a surplus budget in the United States. George Bush got elected, first thing he said is, oh, we gave all this extra money, I'm going to give everybody in the country $300 so they can blow it. My guess is that's what Post-Web did, because I do. And then they lowered taxes. So then what happened? We start running a deficit. The bottom line is, if we want to do things, and it includes paying teachers, having IT, and all the other things that fit into this bucket, don't give up what you have, because as you said, Mr. Ford, if later you want to raise the taxes, that's going to be a difficult job. So that's my bottom line. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, Ms. Unian. Ms. Wicker, I do, I think this would be a good time now for me just to mention some items. We had a great meeting, the principals and Mrs. Dameron, Mr. Jackie Grotter, most all the resource officers were there today with their law enforcement this morning, Sheriff Polster and Chief Kearns. Chief Pierce couldn't be with us, but just some good reminders that we discussed and how things, we were going to handle things, like, you know, some issues dealing with school security, but it was a great meeting, want to mention that. And then just our enrollment numbers. Last year, on the last day of school with students, we had 2,850 students. As of right now, we have 2,940. So we're up 90 students in, in the district. And just for some numbers, the high school is up 65 students. That's, part of that has to do with what I'm going to say next, is the middle school is down 16 students, there's two to enroll tomorrow with a home visit, but Mr. Ackerman lost a very big eighth grade group that the middle school, that, that, at the high school gained. And then Jamestown's up 14, Russell Springs is up seven, and Salem is up 20. So we're up 90 students right now than what we were at the end of school last year, which numbers are always a good thing, not counting preschool. And our preschool numbers have went just up tremendously, and that's why we had to post that .5 teacher for Jamestown, just to cover their numbers, because they max out with a quote. So we're really, really excited about that. Open houses, they were great. I know all of you all were in attendance, and I just want to know, appreciate the schools and all the work on that, they were great. And then just a reminder, we've talked about this before in, in previous meetings, but it's out there on social media now again today, but we are not allowing folks on campus until 15 minutes prior to school dismissal time. So Russell County High School, Russell County Middle School, and Jamestown, they all dismiss at 2:30. So the earliest that parents and guardians, visitors will be allowed on campus to pick up school, will be 2:15, pick up their student, will be 2:15. Russell Springs Elementary School dismisses at 2:42, so 2:27 for them. And Salem dismisses at 2:40, so that's 2:25 for them. That's nothing, we didn't just sit around and decide that this morning, that's been on local media, and we've talked about that now for, it was official on the June 30th policy update, but for over, over a month. And I appreciate the media helping us get that out, but I do ask for everybody's cooperation and help and understanding with that. Just a good time to mention that stuff.
And the reasoning is that?
It's school safety, for one thing. Yeah, we have, you know, all these people on our, on our campuses well before school dismisses, and during some of our, Mr. Grotter can attest to this, some of our school safety audits, the school's compliance officer said, you know, I'll paraphrase, you are willing to be looking for this, you have all these people on your campuses hour, hour and a half before school ever dismisses. So I just ask people, the best thing to do is not to come by until schools, or the bus is dismissed, because then it's literally in and out. But otherwise, 15 minutes before school dismissals, dismisses is the earliest that they can be on campus. And so I hope it's not congestion on 76 and 910 and Highway 127 and everywhere else, but it doesn't have to be that way, it just takes some patience and cooperation to make that work.
Interesting, look at the coffee before you go.
Yeah. Don't mention that, Ms. Wicker.
Anyone else have anything?
I apologize, I missed the high school and middle school one.
Dismissal time?
Yes, sir.
Yes, both of them doing a 2:30, middle school and high school, so 2:15. Yeah.
You can work up until that time. Adoption of the agenda.
Meeting agenda is provided for your review. If there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved as presented. Ms. Wicker, I have nothing to add or take away.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
I'll say it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
The treasures left in Florida.
The consent agenda.
Field trips, we got that.
So on the consent agenda items, we have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills. I'll just note on the construction funds, I sent you all that email, it's the reimbursement we've been waiting for for so long.
It's on its way.
Is on its way from the state, so, yes, set to be deposited tomorrow. And our school activity funds, financial reports, and then the field trips, Ms. Kearns will present the financial report.
It comes as wire, so.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
They take care of that for us. Treasures report for the month of July 2022, the balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $4,618,119.95. The total receipts for the month were $5,038,777.95. Total the receipts and beginning balance together, $9,656,897.90. Disbursements for the month were $1,856,892.41, and that brought our balance at the close of the month to $7,805.49. In fund balances, the general fund, Fund One, $7,676,939.59. Special projects, Fund Two, negative $639,501.50. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, $10,113.39. Capital Outlay, Fund Three Ten, $140,952, even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $496,278.70. Construction, Fund Three Sixty, negative $874,627.94. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $978,223.55. fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $2,627.70. And that brings the total cash in bank for all the funds to $7,805.49.
So even though, you know, that check is coming, or that wire transfer on the construction fund is coming tomorrow, so our financial report for the next month, which reflected in September, will reflect that construction balance back, back to the positive form. We've carried a negative for several months now.
First reading, policy update.
Call for the vote.
We don't have a vote. I'm sorry. Vote.
Well, I'm sorry, they're not making a motion.
Need a motion. Didn't we do that?
Put the consent agenda items. Oh, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thought that was more forgetful than what I thought.
On the consent agenda?
That was, that was on the, adoption of the agenda.
Yeah, okay. So we need a motion.
I didn't think so. I'm sorry. Say the head.
We're going down the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you.
Jordy made motion.
Sorry.
I'll say it.
That's okay. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no actual requirement. Number seven, right?
Yeah, number seven.
First reading, policy update, oh, three point one nine, professional development.
So this, Ms. McCall, do you have anything to add or speak to this?
I just think it's basically a plurality. That train, I was in a few weeks ago, they just brought it out, and I think we are not the only ones who maybe do not have it actually in our policy. Lots of districts do it, we do it, we have done it, we continue to do it, but the trainer just made a reference to say that, hey, just feel like you can go and set your policy, because it does need to be part of your policy, and there are a lot of people in the community that want to bring it out, because they didn't think it was there, so we're just excited to make that.
On the yellow highlighted part, so I'll just note that real quick, on the flexible credit option, each school may devise a flexible PD plan, professional development, to enable its certified personnel to earn credit outside the regular PD schedule. And so we have days in our calendar, and then we always, Ms. McCall's been good to make emphasis that we need to give teachers the option on some days that they might be wanting to do. So flexible credit may be earned on non-duty time during the school calendar, or prior to the first day, or after the last day of school for students. In addition, credit for the upcoming school year may not be earned until June 30th. And so after that date, it kicks in for the next school year, when July 1 starts officially, starts with the next school year. And flexible schedule options shall be reflected in the school's PD plan, along with this comprehensive school improvement plan, the goals of the comprehensive district improvement plan, and the individual's growth plan. And then you notice it has a strike through documentation of completed professional development, strike through the part including a written evaluation shall be required. And so the, we do a lot of PD that you don't have to, to do a evaluation for. So this is just the first reading, it's not emergency or anything like that, so we can have the second reading at the September board reading.
That works so that my grade, don't you?
Yeah. So, go ahead. Okay. So the 2022, 2023 tax rates, as, as previously noted, proposed a tax rate reduction for real estate and personal property that's tangible. KLS 160 dot four seven zero requires local school boards of education to set tax rates within 45 days of receipt of certified property assessments. We received the tax report on Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. Our current tax rate is 52.2 for real estate, it's 52.2 for personal property. I'm proposing that we reduce the tax rate to 51.1 for real estate and 51.1 for personal property tangible, and leave the current motor vehicle, water tax at 52.2, and then the utility tax at 3%, leave those unchanged. This proposal does not require hearing, and is a reduction of 1.1 for both real estate and personal property tangible. And I noted, as I already said, that property valuations in Russell County have increased and afforded us this, this opportunity to do this. And again, I want to, not, not to single out, Mr. Unian, but I do, I do appreciate his comments, but to balance that, though, on, we did receive some additional, you know, SEEK funds, transportation funds and otherwise, but again, keeping this at, or lowering this to 51.1 still generates the 4% that in times past, we would have had to have a hearing, advertise for, and all those things like that, because the property valuations have went up so much. The compensating tax rate, if we were to do that, which would be generating that same level of revenue that we had in the past, would be 49.2. For several years now, off the top of my head, I can't think, Ms. Kearns may recall, we kept the tax rate at 52.2, which still generated additional dollars, but it has never generated as much as what it would have this year of keeping it 52.2. So it would be 1.1 over the 4% rate, which would trigger a lot of different additional things to happen, in addition to a hearing, well, I'll just, that was included in part of your packet. But above 4% is advertising, a hearing, and then you do the additional advertising, which could be subject to a recall on that part as well. There's a lot of additional hoops to, to jump through. Again, I think for us to, to lower tax rates and to still generate that 4% revenue increase, because we did give raises and a lot of different things. I think it's positioned us well. Ms. Kearns, do you have anything to talk or add about that?
So if we?
They lowered it to keep compensated, yeah.
If we left it like it is, we would get too much, is that what you're saying?
No, no, you never get too much.
That we would have to do different things.
Mr. Murray smiled on that. Because it is above the 4% revenue increase, it triggers additional things for the voters.
Okay, that's what I meant.
So we always, in the past, Marla could, Ms. Kearns could speak to that part better, about the hearing part.
So in the past, if you?
They changed that this year.
Yes, they did. So in the past, if you wanted to set a rate that was anything above the compensating rate, so if they said compensating rate is 50 cents, and your current rate was 50.1, you had to have a hearing to even just leave the rate right there, almost at compensating. So they've changed that this year, and you can take up to the 4% rate without having to have a hearing. Of course, even when we had a hearing in the past, it was not subject to recall.
Right.
So I think it was four to five years ago that we took the 4% for the last time that we've done that, and we set our rate at this 52.2, that it's been for all these years now, four or five years.
Yep.
And so since then, that has fell between the compensating and the 4% increase in revenue rate. So we've just left it, you know, we've been leaving it, saying tax rates are unchanged, tax rates are unchanged, and slowly we've been, you know, drifting between those two rates. And this year, with property tax values going up so much, we can actually capture 4% in additional tax revenue, it's not an increase to the tax rate, obviously, but it gives us more revenue, an amount of more revenue that we haven't had in four or five years. Plus, we're still being able to reduce that rate, because if we left it at 52.2, which you can do, we have to do additional advertising, we do have to have a hearing when we set the rate.
In addition to the traditional?
It could potentially, if, if enough people wanted to, to go that route and get the petition going, that 1.1% that we're above that 4% could be recalled.
Yeah.
And it would take, you know, 45 to 60 more days before we could really officially have what our rate is, and there's, there's just a lot of additional.
It extends the timeline.
It's an incredibly rare thing for school districts to try to adopt a recallable rate, and usually when they do, they're trying to add a nickel.
Nickel tax.
For additional building funds, and, you know, if you've watched the news in the last few years, there's been very small success with getting those passed.
So if this was last year, we would still be required to have a hearing.
Yes.
Because it generated the money.
But we no longer have to do that.
But KDN said that that is no longer required, you no longer have to do that. So tonight can be finalized, like in the past, we would have said, okay, we will propose this tax rate, and we'll schedule a hearing, and then we'll officially vote, and we'll have to schedule a special board meeting. But that is not the case now because of, of how they changed that, or really, they didn't change anything, they just interpreted it differently.
They decided they've been doing it.
But that little chart that I put in your board packet, it kind of highlights, highlights everything.
Got a new lawyer.
But it's, it's the 4% row that we're at. Advertising, no, hearing, no, additional advertising is no, but it still positions us well to have some additional revenue.
So the disadvantage is just going through more hearing than possibly.
Subjected to recall, and above the 4%. Which on, like Ms. Kearns said, for, for a district, they typically don't get into going for a recall, or that type of, on your regular tax rates, you do it on your nickel taxes for facilities. But to have a tax rate on your general property and tangible and things like that, above 4%, that, that triggers that recall, I, I don't know of any district that's, I'm sure there is, but that's never, that's just, I don't know if it ever happened.
I don't know if it's really ever even happened like this before, but certainly don't know anybody on it that's set at that high of.
But Ms. Kearns and I did discuss, you know, when, when market value plummet, they, they always do, and then our rate will be, you know, 51.1, which is not going to generate as much money when market values are down on valuations. But for now, with everything else, I would not be, you know, doing this if I wasn't comfortable knowing that it's going to generate that 4%. That's what districts would always appreciate, that 4% revenue, that's, it's kind of what rolls off your tongue on the, on the guidance, and that anything above that, again, is what triggers that, that other hearing. So it's a, it's a really unique position to be in, to be able to lower tax rates and still generate additional revenue like that. And again, to do the compensating tax rate, we would have to lower them down to 49.2, and that's supposed to generate the same amount of revenue that we did last year. But we all know how much, you know, in prices and everything, it went up.
You say generate a recall, recall of what? The money that you would arrange at the higher rate, or?
That's, that's correct, yeah. So that 1.1, Mr. Unian, would be subject to, that's how I understand, would be subject to the recall, because that's the part that's over the 4% revenue increase. Which, like Ms. Kearns said, Little Rock County just went through motor recall of the nickel tax, and it, it failed, the district didn't get it.
That'd be money we couldn't use for buildings and?
Yeah, on the nickel taxes, right. My recommendation is that we, I recommend the following tax rates, a 51.1 for real estate and personal property tangible, and that the other tax rates, motor vehicle, watercraft, they're both at 52.2, and utility at 3%, that they remain the same. So the big ticket items there is what has to take the reduction of 51.1.
I'll make a motion of that effect.
I'll say it.
Yeah, have a motion, say. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Authorization for purchase of two new school buses.
Now, skip one.
That's fundraiser?
No. That come from Russell Springs Elementary School fundraiser approval.
We have a fundraiser request from Russell Springs Elementary School for the world's finest chocolate sales, September the 6th to the 16th. The Russell Springs Elementary School PTO is the fund, is the organizer, and the proceeds will be used for playground equipment and updates, and then of course I've attached the form request, and this is a very familiar fundraiser, I know you all are familiar with it in years past, and one that Russell Springs likes to do every year if they, if they can.
It's good stuff.
It is good chocolate, yeah, it is, really is.
When I saw what they expect to make.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's.
It's a good turnaround, yeah. They anticipate the profit of $10,000 with the, with the playground, yeah.
I mean, it's something to buy.
So I recommend approval of the Russell Springs Elementary School's fundraiser request.
I make a motion to approve the fundraiser for Russell Springs Elementary.
I'll say it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Great to speak with you today. Yeah. Authorization for purchase of two new school buses.
Proposed to purchase two new school buses through the Kentucky State Contract Price List with Boyd Company, you all have the quotes attached, 175 passenger bus for $149,469, and a 72 passenger bus for $147,234. I want to be very clear that each quote does include the air conditioning system at a cost of $12,800 for each system, and then, of course, it includes the perimeter camera system, the interior camera system, and the stop arm camera for that, both, and we always get the extended gas tanks because of the routes and trips and things like that, you can see, and then you think they come with them, but all those storage underneath the buses, they're add-ons, of course, that, the whole thing is through there on the price list, but this is, I, I know $12,800 is a lot for air conditioning, but the?
It is, it's rad.
That's right. And the systems have proven to be very, very durable, they have lasted for a number of years. We currently have them on our handicap buses, and we have them on some other buses, but the way things are now, and it's just so hot, we, in school it's hot, we might be starting school, it's hot, and, and trips, and, you know, the mechanics? hot, we might be starting school, it's hot, and trips, and, you know, the mechanics have worked on them, very, very little. I just think our drivers and our students deserve it for that.
Especially football.
Yeah. Yeah. I know it's a lot of money, but it's not something they're repairing every year. Yes. Yeah, Mr. Kazook, know that the resale value is here. We're, you know, proposing to purchase buses for $150,000, and we surplus them and maybe get two to $2,500.
Yeah.
You know, after the rollout. Yep. And this is another price, you all see that, even if we took off the $12,800, you know, 130-something, it wasn't that long ago, we had buses for 105,000, 110,000. And you know how much everything's went up. So we have it in the budget for purchase of two buses. So this brings the price at $296,703. And again, it's through the Kentucky State Price Contract List with Boyd.
I'll make a motion except that it's presented.
I'm sorry?
He made a motion except that it's presented.
And Ms. Brenda asked if, yeah, but this is not financing or anything like that, we're paying straight out?
Straight out, yeah.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
I think this past year was our last year on those KISTA payments. Is that not correct?
Your fourth.
Your fourth, okay.
So we don't have any payments on?
No.
Many trips I wish we had air conditioning on.
Yes.
Contracts memorandum of agreements.
Okay, there are several contracts here. The Head Start contract, you all are familiar with that each year, for full utilization and then the contract with them. The insulated roofing contractors, contract that you have for the roof repair replacement central office, the old ATC and the NJLTC slash alternative school building. You all, at the previous board meeting, approved the proposals with the costs at the last board meeting, as you recall. This is that KDE contract that you see on all of our construction projects that outlines everybody's responsibility with each one. And then we have four of memorandums of agreement between interest healthcare, SAFY of Kentucky, abiding hope counseling, and bluegrass professional counseling. And that is four more names. I think all of those, except for abiding hope, you all have seen similar agreements before, that they provide mental health therapy for our students during school hours. And Mrs. Dameron, it's great to vet them out and hold them accountable on just what we expect of them and what they expect of us as well. Mrs. Dameron, do you have anything to add for those four? We've had, to my knowledge, we've had zero issues with any of the, nothing that can't be just fixed real easily.
Since we've gone through this process, we've had pretty much-
Yeah, it's been great. So again, we don't allow them to see their, our kids during our school time unless they have these agreements in place with us. Well, I recommend approval of the contracts or memorandum of agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve contracts and or memorandum of agreements that have been approved by the board attorney.
You second, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Ms. Dameron, and I know you won't have this right off the top of your head, but Ms. Wicker asked just the number of students that receive services. I know Michaela had a working number last year, and I can't recall it. Do you-
She does, and she's working on this because she's not got all of the associated problems off the first week or something. We can report that out to you if it's the-
But between Cumberland Family Medical and the Healthy Kids Clinic with the behavioral clinic, and Adanta, and the agencies, it's hundreds of kids-
Hundreds.
-that receive therapy and counseling services. Yes.
I mean, the teachers can also say the day.
And that would just the ones we know of.
Right, there might be some outside, yeah. But I appreciate our principals and our teachers, because it does take some time to make that work inside the school day. But when we know a child needs therapy or counseling, I think that's right, if we help facilitate that to happen. Because sometimes of work schedules with parents or whatever, it's just hard to make that work outside of school hours. So I just really appreciate that.
It's a lot of work to make it fit within the school hours, too.
It is, yep. Have to be the good flexibility.
Wilderness Education Project.
So I have this divided, as you know from your board packet, into two subsections under that one. And just a little bit of background, I know you all have had it, but I've given you a printout of this, I know it's in your board packet. But a few months ago, Ms. Dick and I were approached by Mr. Clay Sloan. She and I both had worked with Clay when he was with Wilderness Trail Educational Cooperative in our special ed days. And he reached out to us because he's with the Wilderness Education Project, and they were applying for a grant with the U.S. Department of Labor, pre-apprenticeship program, student work skills, and just a litany of really, really good stuff. And essentially, it would pay for a teacher up to $63,000. I think it's off the top of my head, $63,000. I have it in your board packet of what it would pay for an employee. Let me just hit some of the highlights of this program. So the Wilderness Education Project has been selected to receive funding under the Apprenticeship Building America Grant Program for the next four years from the U.S. Department of Labor to strengthen and modernize registered apprenticeship programs to provide pathways to employment. The focus of this program, under the guidance of WEP, will be to develop equity partnerships and pre-apprenticeship activities. We do not have any students, you all know, we had previously had students participating in pre-apprenticeship programs, registered pre-apprenticeship programs. But during COVID, I know some of those companies kind of backed out during all those times. So we hope to get all this wrapped up again. So the Wilderness Education Project applied under the category of expansion and registered apprenticeship program opportunities for youth with the consortium of organizations, and partnerships to help develop talent pipelines into high schools. So here are the counties that are participating in this. And I was really, again, really appreciate Mr. Clay reaching out to us. So Garrett, Johnson, Plasky, Russell, and Wolf are the counties in Kentucky, that's it, that get to participate in this project pending your all's approval. So again, it's the increased partnerships that commit to expanding previously developed pre-apprenticeship programs, which will lead to developing and expanding registered apprenticeship programs for enrollment of high school and opportunity of youth underrepresented and underserved communities. So a person, and what they're looking for is someone that either has had administrative experience, or they have that certificate and in the CTE, if they have knowledge of the career and technical education pathways, because this is what that's all about with the apprenticeship program, to where we would target students, get them out with business and industry, working while they're in school, and also some out-of-youth opportunities. So a lot of this that I've given you on this background, on the first part of it, is we have to approve the memorandum. This first memorandum of agreement, it runs through this school year, concludes June 30th to 2023. But then we would have another memorandum of agreement for the next year, and then another one, and then another one, to carry us through for four years. And it is specifically with Wilderness Education Project, because they are the ones that got that grant to house this. And the second part, which is two different action items, but I may go ahead and talk about that, is the job description and position for the career support specialist. So we would hire someone, once you all approve this, pending your approval, and approve this job description that funds up to $65,833 per year for salary and fringe benefits. And anything over that amount will be the responsibility of the district. And so you saw the career support specialist job description. And once that's approved, and I've talked to Ms. Tardell, we met again today, of talking about potential people. But it's accountable to, reports to, immediately reports to, the program coordinator, again, that's Clay Sloan, and the high school principal. I do want to note, though, they need some flexibility in June and maybe even in July. So 10 days, we would work with this person, and they would need 10 days of flexible time in the calendar to where we would know that person would not report to work on maybe 10 Fridays throughout the school year, or 10 Mondays, or a mix between the two, because we need them to work 10 days in June. And this isn't a position that pays extra days, an extra stipend or anything like that. It's a teacher's salary position, but they need some flexibility in June. And so Clay said that's what he was asking people to do. They just wouldn't come in to work on a few Fridays or Mondays or whatever days we could work with them on doing that. So this little infographic just kind of gives the highlights of the program. So it's a lot of work-based learning and career technical education opportunities, going out, you know, going out to Bruce, Dr. Snyder, Stevens-Poppenstill, you know, our hospital, Cumberland Family Medical, a lot of different entities, and say, hey, we've got this project, we've got this project, I'm going to help supervise these kids, and really helping students connect the dots and getting them into a pipeline of employment in high-sector jobs.
Isn't this sort of what we gave at Dr. Snyder?
It is. It is. But this would provide someone helping to facilitate it. And that's how we, that's a great point, Ms. Jordan, that's how we got our kind of name put in the hat, because they knew we'd already worked on this stuff in the past. Yeah. So we're really, really excited. I think it'll be a, you know, it's a good plus for our kids and our high school. There's five school districts, and it's six high schools, because Plasky County, of course, has more than one high school.
For 10 days, that'd be, that's worth it.
What now?
They have to be off 10 days, and it'd be worth it.
Oh, yeah, they're off 10 days throughout the year, but they have to work them in June. Yeah. So the first one is approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Wilderness Trail, or Wilderness Education Project. So that's the first part. And then, if you approve that, then I would ask you to, we'll go to the second part, where it's actually the job and the job description.
Can you give both of them?
No, I needed two separate things.
There's the first one and the second.
So the first one is, I recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Wilderness Education Project as presented. And you all have that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Murray? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the second part of this, then, is that job description and the position, because you all would be approving this position with the job description. I recommend approval of the career support specialist position and job description as presented. And then, just in full transparency, there's still a little bit up in the air that Ms. Carnes has been working on to, of whether or not this will count as a federal funds. And if it does, then we would be required to pay the health insurance part of that, because the state says, no, that's federal money, and you have to take the health insurance out of that. And I say all that because this $65,833 depends on who's selected, the number of years. It may or may not fully pay for it. And like I said, the district is responsible for the rest of it.
So this will just be serving the four counties, the five counties?
This one position is for Russell County. Yes. Yeah, and then each of the other ones have one for that. Yeah, that's a great clarification. This one just gets to work with our students. Yes. Yes.
And I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you all. Excited.
John, is it you?
It's the band, yeah. I thought it was Zach's comments going off on Facebook or something.
Ready? Use of school bus by 4H wave board policy 06.5. Use of buses by outside groups.
So we have received requests by 4H to use one of our school buses for transporting the 4H shooting sports coaches and parents to an event in Willmore, Kentucky on September the 10th. The trip request is attached. I do want to note and emphasize, it would be one of our drivers driving one of our school buses, but this is not a school event, okay? So it's 4H asking to use one of our buses. So our current policy forbids the use of outside entities to use our school buses, but it's up to the board. You all can waive that policy and make this happen for the 4H. So I just did note that it's, you know, the use of school buses by outside agencies is prohibited. The board can elect to waive the policy. So Ms. Kristi Martin, the 4H sponsor, has provided a trip request. Like I said, Mr. Walters, one of our drivers, would do that. And they fully reimburse all the cost, and I have no issues with it and proud to support the 4H. But I do just want to publicly state that I would not recommend, I would not bring to you all something that wasn't heavily school-related. You know, I would not bring to you all, let's use one of our buses, because my family, as big as it is, wants to go on a trip. You know what I'm saying? I would not, and I just want to be very clear about that. I would not bring to you all a trip request for that instance.
So the waiver would just be for events?
This is that one waiver for that one event. And I'm only, I'm really comfortable with it, because 4H is great school partner, and they do a great thing with us. But I don't want it to get out there to think that we would start, it's very expensive anyway.
Kristi Martin is last.
Yeah, she does a lot of work, and she's in our schools all the time. So I have no issues with it. I just want to be very clear that I don't want to get, right, to the habit of doing it unless it's firmly attached to-
If it's our students.
It is our students, yes it is. Yes. But it's not our event. I just want to be clear on both sides. So I recommend approval of the 4H trip request and a waived board policy 06.5.
I'll make a motion for this one.
Well, because of 4H.
And waive board policy.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Although one of my sisters did note that when we surplus those buses, it would be fun if we did have one as a big old family. It would be fun.
May a dame have this one.
We could put the sheriff family on the side of our bus.
Why, yes.
Review, consider for approval updated district facility plan.
Mr. Ackerman, would you kind of like to put you on the spot? He, Mr. Ackerman has served as our chair of the local planning committee. They elected him as chair of this. Do you have anything to add, or you want to, where we're at, or I can, go ahead?
Just really excited to have it on the agenda, to have it back to the KDE, an opportunity to talk about the potential, the LPC, really involved, helpful in the process, excited about the opportunity for the kids and community.
So we are nearing the end of this lengthy process for the school district's district facility plan. And there's a lot of things, and Mr. Ackerman can attest, we talked about this at the LPC meeting Friday evening. There's a lot of things that's on a district facility plan, because the state tells you, you reflect the district's needs. And so, you know, we have additional classrooms at each of the elementary schools, and all those things are listed. But our biggest need, or what the LPC determined was the biggest need, and I can-
Which is the local planning committee.
Local planning committee, yes, I'm sorry. It is the construction of the middle school, of that. But in conversations with the state, the Kentucky Department of Education does not recognize that, and Mr. Kazook's been at all the meetings as well, they do not recognize it as a new middle school, because sixth grade is currently housed in the ANC. So they said, in actuality, we will be doing a major demolition with a major addition. That's kind of a play on words.
Yeah.
But for us to consider a brand-new middle school, it would've been all-encompassed, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth, like we did with Russell Springs or Jamestown. Gone. But now, since sixth grade is here, they consider a major addition and demolition, because we would still be tearing down that. So I say all of that, that will be, for this four-year cycle, because your district facility plan runs for four years, that will consume the funding and the need for this four-cycle, this four-year cycle. So when we do this again, it is highly likely that the additional classrooms for Jamestown and the high school, and Salem and Russell Springs, you'll see them again, because you always reflect the need, and it gets carried over to that, if that makes sense. But that's the big-ticket item that's on the district facility plan. And I know you all have that. Mr. Ackerman's worked hard. I make it certain that all the classrooms would be accounted for, and all those things like that. So pending your approval tonight, it's not done, but the next steps are this. So the local board of, in a regular or special meeting, considers the local planning committee recommended district facility plan, which is attached to your board packet. If you all approve that, the local board then approves votes on the district facility plan. If approved, the local board votes to convene a public hearing. The local board shall also vote to appoint a hearing officer to conduct a public hearing. So if you all approve this, I will send an email to our construction consultant at KDE, give them the board minutes, and say that the draft district facility plan has been approved. He will send back a- He will send back a hearing package, and I've already asked Mr. Tim Lucas with RSA, he's been with us before, you all familiar with him, and he said he would be honored to serve as the hearing officer, and I would work with him and you all to schedule the hearing officer, the hearing, the public hearing, because we would schedule that public hearing and then have a special call board meeting right after that. There's just a lot of moving parts on working with the district facility plan.
It is.
And doing that. So is that clear as mud?
Yeah.
And there's a lot of things that have to be in that. For instance, when we schedule the date, you have to advertise two weeks in advance. One week doesn't cut it on this. So it's very stipulated on all those different things, what we have to go through. So tonight, yeah, it's the actual plan, approval of the district facility plan, and you would authorize me to schedule the public hearing with Tim Lucas with RSA advisors, serving as the hearing officer. That's a mouthful of emotion. Did, did you have anything to add to the facility plan? Because Mr. Kazook's been with it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Brenda made the motion, and Ms. Wilson second. Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickard?
Yes.
Put this thing on the road.
And one of the committee members had asked what would be our timeline for the middle school once this gets done, and I think just in the hopeful of spring, if I.
Spring, break ground.
Maybe to, you know, get the beds and break ground, if that goes as possible.
Request for proposals, asphalt ceiling, cracked ceiling, strapping.
Attach this request for proposals to. I know, I'm getting tickled because I knew Marla and Emily were tickled as much as we had to work on this whole project with this request for proposals. Our parking lots at our elementary schools, you all say they're in pretty bad shape. They're getting really faded, and we've got a lot of cracks in them. So request for proposals to solicit bids for parking lot asphalt ceiling, crack repair, and strapping. Again, it's been several years since it's been done for Jamestown, Russell Springs, and Salem, and the central office. I do not recommend that we do anything right here on middle school campus, of course. We didn't do any asphalt because it's just going to be tore up, and it would just, you know, just get wiped away during construction anyway. And we just completed the paving project for the ANC High School and like Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. So if you all approve this request for proposals, we'll get that sent out to many different entities and get those back. I would bring them back to you all, and then we would, the board would have to, you know, accept whichever one got the proposal. And I do appreciate Ms. Carnes and Ms. Hadley for all the work that they've done in working on this proposal to send out to the companies.
So this has to go through the board rather than just you.
Yeah, I needed to come back to you all to approve the proposals.
I'll make a motion to approve for the request for proposals for asphalt ceiling, cracked ceiling, and strapping as presented.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickard?
Yes.
Out of state and overnight trips.
The following groups have submitted trip requests that include overnight travel. Russell County High School volleyball, September 30th through October the 1st to Lexington, Kentucky for the Halloween Smash Tournament. And again, the trip request, of course, you all have, all of these are attached. Russell County FFA, August 18th to the 19th, the Kentucky State Fair for various FFA contests. Russell County FFA, October 26th to the 28th, to Indianapolis, Indiana, for the National FFA Convention. And the eighth-grade class trip, April the 2nd to the 6th, 2023, to Washington, DC. I will note that the charter bus is provided as part of the pay participation with the tour company, which is World Strides, because we always have to know why a regular school bus is not being taken. And then the Russell County High School Marching Band, October the 14th to the 16th, to St. Louis, Missouri, for the Bands of America, super-regional marching band competition, and that trip form is attached. So I recommend approval of the out-of-state and overnight trips as presented.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state and overnight trips.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bobham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wickard?
Yes.
To get watch on COVID?
Oh, he's going.
Yeah, COVID's going to Washington, DC, and when he found out I wasn't getting half to go, he was really good with going. So I'm not going to go, but I know he'll be in good hands. There's a lot of good people going. This is something here on data security that Mr. Bell brings to our mind. Each year, it has to be completed to just kind of review what happens prior to August 31st of each year, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Bell.
Yeah, it basically is a formality that we have to be always coordinated each year. We have a packet, I think, explaining.
Yeah, both attachments.
If we have a security breach, what we have to do immediately, within a few hours, 35 days even, is what we have to do as far as the investigation, we can, we do ourselves, and then what we submit to the state.
And the phishing attempts are getting, they're very smart. They will take our names. I have one going around last year. It appeared as if it was coming from, from me. Haven even copied my signature line, but if, oftentimes, there's little things, though, you can tell. That's how we know it's fake. Yes, Ms. Wickard got an email that, that was a hoax email, and our teachers, I mean, we deal with it all the time. But very much more in tune than what, just a few years ago, on our ideas, if it was really important, somebody would get back with you. And, you know, you just don't click on links and things like that, but.
Well, it's really scary, but for me, the scam calls, and they're from places that family lives, you know? And you don't recognize the number, but could it be them calling from another number or something?
Yeah.
That's scary.
When the fake one went to you from me, was it the gift card one? Was it the one, hey, hey, are you busy? I need you to do something for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was. We get them, they want you to go buy. If you would have, if you would have fully executed that, the person would have had you to go buy cards, gift cards, and send a picture of the author, of the code that you scratched off and all that, because that's all they need, you know, to make use of the card, if someone fully executed that, that plan, which is, that's one of the more common ones. Yeah.
Who's thinking?
I'm sorry?
Oh, that's good.
Oh, no, 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 no. Chris, I did, talk about that. I did not add that slide.
Something else we're doing to add to that is, August 30th, we have a, two meetings that they would provide us all. We're going to be switching to the FFA, multi-factor authentication with our email logins, meetings. And we're not sure exactly how we're doing it yet, but when you log in with your password, there's going to be a second step. You may have to, you know, get a text on your phone or something, put a code in to, you know, pass to that authentication. That way they know it's a tech, and you know, they're not stole the password.
Which we're glad. I don't consider that a hassle because we deal with a lot of, a lot of information that needs to be kept extra secure, so.
Credit card companies and things are doing that now.
Yes. We think there probably will be an option to, I'm familiar, you know, save this device or something like that. But it would prevent, it would prevent John Doe that had someone's login and password from gaining full access somewhere else without the second authentication. Anything else, Mr. Bell?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Personnel report?
Personnel reports. Aaron Richardson hired as custodian at Russell Springs Elementary School. Taylor Grader hired exceptional education teacher, LBD, position at Russell County Middle School. Sarah Shear, district position at Jameson Elementary School, Russell Springs Elementary School, and Salem, that's that itinerant position that travels around. Haven Hadley, English language arts position at Russell County Middle School. And Skaggs, math position for middle school. Joyce Monday, instructional assistant at Russell Springs Elementary School. That's one of those one-year positions that the board had previously approved. Krista Kimbrel, instructional assistant at Russell Springs Elementary School. It's currently the position as preschool. Brian Keith Ellis is head boys' middle school basketball coach. Caleb Stotts is high school assistant boys' basketball coach. Faith Womack, assistant principal at Salem Elementary School, 210-day position. Haley Hadley, been hired as a preschool teacher at Russell Springs Elementary School. Olivia Huddleston, instructional assistant at Jameson Elementary School. Megan Phelps as assistant principal at Jameson Elementary School, that's another 210-day position. Karina Boger, instructional assistant at Jameson Elementary School. Raisha Meese is a school-based bookkeeper at Salem Elementary. Kelly Stapp, primary position at Jameson Elementary School. Jason Harris is the high school assistant football coach, and Ben Abel, high school assistant football coach. Heather Burton, primary instructional assistant at Russell Springs Elementary School. Dennis Shelton resigned as assistant basketball coach at the high school. Mr. Ellis resigned as a, as an assistant athletic director at the middle school. Travis Miller hired as assistant athletic director for the middle school. Jennifer Loy hired as the bookkeeper at Russell Springs Elementary School. And Pam Johnson transferred from the Russell Springs Elementary School custodian position to the Russell Springs preschool instructional assistant position. That's what opened up that other custodial position that Mr. Richardson got at Russell Springs Elementary School. I want to compliment our custodians. This is the first time in a number of years that all of our schools have all custodian positions filled. Years that it's been that way. Ms. Rida can attest to that, and.
The schools looked excellent.
Yes, open house, they really, really did. And we're just really, really pleased and really appreciate our custodians and everybody that's went to work, get our schools together. And we have, all positions are filled except for the new preschool position that was posted for Jamestown. There are actually site-based council meetings tomorrow, and I think we still have a couple of instructional assistant positions. But all of our teaching positions are filled. Just really, really blessed on everybody in place for that.
No certified or pervasive, sorry, all certified?
We have one emergency teacher hired, and all the rest of them are either fully certified or in the option six programs.
Okay.
And the one that's emergency will not stay that way, but it was at the initial part. Yeah. Yeah, so we were, we were good, Ms. Joy, on that.
Yeah, we're blessed.
Very much so. Very much so. Principals have to put in a lot of time when it comes to those school-level positions on hiring and interviewing and council consultation. It takes up a, takes up a summer. Mr. Ackerman can attest to that, certainly this summer, because he's with more hires than anybody from our schools.
Okay, but comment?
The van kicked in right on cue.
That is the van.
I'll make the motion with a juror's voice, because I'm ready to say.
Second came.
I'll say that.
All in favor of them?
Yes.
Okay, now we turn it on. How can we turn it off?